Acknowledging to all of council that, yes, this report was very, very late getting to you. We received, I received 115-page appraisal report at 6:30 on Tuesday night. So I had to read it and then I had to try and pull together this report and presentation. I made an executive decision that it was more important to get information into your hands to at least start this conversation rather than let this languish any longer. We've been waiting for CBRE to provide this information for quite a long time now. Lynne and I have done our level best to try and expedite the process. I think what we have is a very thorough product now, so I'm grateful to CBRE for all of their work, but I do apologize respectfully to council for the lateness of this. I just wanted to keep the conversation moving forward. So what was CBRE asked to do? CBRE has undertaken a couple of pieces of work for us. I have both an appraisal report as well as a feasibility analysis. And those two reports taken together answer several questions that I think are pertinent to council's decision. What's the market for assisted living and memory care services in South Gray? What's the highest and best use of the Gray Gables facility if it was converted from its current use? What's the valuation of the facility and the property? What factors should be considering when determining that valuation? And how should the current tenants be considered? And Lynne did cover that off in her presentation. So as you've heard, and now CBRE has confirmed in their analysis, that there is a significant need for those additional seniors services. The population over the age of 75 will grow by 2,240 in the market area, which is that area around Markdale, covering Chatsworth, Gray Highlands, West Gray, Southgate. 2,240 persons in it by 2026. And I think it's important to look at these percentages. Now Lynne did mention those in her initial report. Not everyone needs additional care. We've talked in the past how about 10% of the population requires long-term care services. CBRE confirms that about 15% of that population over the age of 75 will require some form of assisted living. The memory care and Alzheimer's care population is about 5%. So that provides you some guidance, especially when we're talking about, you know, growing communities. Where's that age demographic that's coming into these communities? How long will it be before they hit that age 75 threshold? And then further to that, what proportion of those folks will actually require any of this kind of care? CBRE's analysis, and I think we knew this as well, there are no providers of memory care services in that market area south of Owen Sound. There are two assisted living facilities. There's a need for 19 Alzheimer's or memory care beds now. So those are folks who may be in a long-term care facility right now, where they could be in an alternate facility. They may be at home and being cared for by someone in their own family, which is concerning. CBRE recognizes that by 2026, the demand will be there for 100 additional assisted living beds in South Gray. CBRE took a look at affordability and market depth as part of their analysis. So we've talked about the demand side. We know the population is there to require the services. This aspect of their analysis looks at what's affordable and what's desirable in the market. In order to complete that analysis, they looked at a number of factors, including what's the household composition? Is the population over the age of 75 singles or couples? Because this drives the form of the dwelling unit that they would prefer to have, understanding whether the market wants to see studios and single rooms versus suites versus the shared accommodation that we have some of. So they looked at that when they were providing their analysis to us. They looked at household income levels. We know that the median household income for the population over the age of 75 in Gray County is lower than that for the province of Ontario. So again, that has an impact on the market rent that people are willing and able to pay in an assisted or a private facility. They look at average home values and they identified a home value of about $342,000 within that market area. Again, that's pertinent to determining the affordability for rental accommodation. They looked at the influencer population and its socioeconomic level. Your influencer population is the children of the people aged 75 and older. And where do those children live? Are they close by or have they moved to a more urban area or farther away? And what's their socioeconomic bracket? The wealthier your children are, the more likely you are to move to where the kids They also looked at what they refer to as neighborhood segmentation. So this is really looking at the characteristics of neighborhoods within that primary market area and what people's preferences are in a particular neighborhood. This ties back again to the kind of facility and the kind of amenities people would like to have. Finally, as kind of a quality check, if you will, they also examined the rents and occupancy levels at existing facilities to determine, you know, whether things were lining up between what their findings were and what's actually happening on the ground now. So all taken all together, this information is used to inform the valuation on the existing facility and also any characteristics of what a new build or an addition onto that facility should look like. Looking at the Gray Gables facility and if it was to change from its long-term care use, what the optimum use of that facility is, not surprisingly, their recommendation is that it would be best suited to being transitioned into an assisted living and memory care facility. I see, I forgot and had that memory care in there twice. I apologize. Rather than, say, seniors apartments, which might be another use for a facility like that. Assisted living and memory care are what CBRE refers to as heavy care uses. They share similar building requirements to long-term care, so that minimizes the amount of renovation that would be necessary to that facility. There is, and they recognized something that's been talked about around this table in the past, the potential to develop an additional 51,000 square feet of space on the land on the northwest corner of the facility that would support 60 units. Taken together, the 50 units that they see in the existing Gray Gables facility plus an additional 60 units that could be added on to that facility creates 110 bed or 110-unit facility that they feel would be optimal to maximize the efficiency at that site. When it came to undertaking the valuation, CBRE appraisals consider four factors. Is it legal to make the change that you're asking to make? Are there any physical limitations? What's the financial and profitability picture look like with making the change? The conversion and addition, we know, would require a zoning bylaw amendment because currently that site is institutional. A 60-unit addition is considered likely necessary at some point at that location, so there would be the normal planning processes required with putting an addition on. As far as the physical characteristics of the site itself, the visibility, the location, the proximity to other amenities and retail, the fact that it's in an established residential neighborhood, all of those things were considered very strong factors in support of the building. The analysis of the market depth suggests that a facility like this would support a stabilized 95% occupancy level, which is what the retail or the marketplace is looking for in order to support an investment. After undertaking those factors and providing that assurance, then they went on from there to, undertook the valuation from two perspectives. One was examining the sale of comparable properties and the second around assessing the income yield on return on investment for the purchase. So the impact for the current tenants, we've already discussed, and CBRE does not see that there's any increase in value in the Gray Gables property by converting the space, and it would be preferred, or their recommendation was, that the current tenants remain in place even if the facility did change hands. Lastly, the specific valuation, the actual numbers, will be discussed with council in camera later on in this meeting. At this time, releasing the detailed appraisal information would make any future negotiation relatively impossible. And this is not different than any other property transaction that a municipality undertakes, that those valuations remain confidential until you've had an opportunity to negotiate with a potential purchaser. And so as I indicate here, should the recommended RFP process be undertaken and a proposal accepted, all of that information would be publicly available. All right. That's essentially the end of this part of my presentation, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Council does have or did receive a redacted version of the appraisal report, so you have that shortened version. What's been redacted out of there are the actual valuation numbers as well as some very detailed information, sales data, et cetera, from some of the comparables, which again would kind of compromise any negotiation if that was freely available at this time. So the redacted version is on the website, and certainly, I know there's a lot of information here, so it may be that, you know, there's further conversations about this in the future. But again, I can answer any questions you have at the moment.
Okay, thanks very much, Kim. I do appreciate it was burning the midnight oil for you certainly to try to digest almost 200 pages of a document into the report that you've brought forward. So thank you on behalf of county council for doing that. Questions then for county council? Do you have questions then for Kim regarding the report then that she has just presented to you? Counselor Burley.
Thanks, Kim, for getting this report out to us. And I just had a report that was 600 and some pages long. You can cite it down in the report. Appreciate that. But with any report, what I see before me is all on the positive side. What was the negative side of the report that we don't see?
The potential weaknesses that they raised with regard to the Gray Gables facility, and I mean, this is all relative. I don't, I did not perceive from my review of the report that there was anything there that was particularly or overwhelmingly negative. Where, on balance, when they evaluated this facility compared to any other that they might appraise in the province of Ontario, Markdale is a tertiary market. It's far away from the, from the big city. The median household income here is lower than it is in other parts of the province. Gray Gables is 17 years old, and so that would mean this would make this a Class B real estate investment rather than a Class A, because Class As are brand-new buildings that were purpose-built and have all the bells and whistles. But Class Bs still pretty good. Those were kind of the key things that they raised in their assessment and valuation, or just kind of the general characteristics compared to other places in the province.
Other comments? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Ward and Barfert. Thanks, Lynne, or sorry, Kim. He referenced or they referenced in the report Rockwood Terrace. We know that it's going to have to be something done with it. Did they have any suggestions or ideas of what the old Rockwood Terrace transformed into?
They did make a site visit to Rockwood Terrace at the same time that they visited Gray Gables. Looking at the site, looking at the building itself, for them, for CBRE, they did not feel that there was a strong business case for a commercial real estate developer to take that on, that there's just, is just not there for them. I don't think that that means that there's not someone within our own community who has, you know, a stronger tie to Gray County that might be more interested in taking that on. But from CBRE's perspective and their, you know, world where you're advertising opportunities on, you know, a provincial or sometimes national scale to large companies, this just wouldn't be a property that they could really see themselves taking on.
They didn't know how we operate here in Gray County.
Counselor Halliday.
Yes, thank you for providing some invaluable statistics. I think Markdale, like all areas in Gray County, will require assisted living, not just Markdale.
Absolutely.
We have, if it's just Markdale, then we have a geographic issue. We can't live in silos. I have to say that one of the things that we have in Markdale is we have the luxury of having one of the best community health clinics in Ontario. It also has just received $500,000 to refurbish and rebuild some areas for seniors. There's still 7,000 square feet there. We know that there are, you know, there are issues with Alzheimer's and a lot of different areas. We also have a 30,000 square foot per school that we hope will become available that could be repurposed. We also have in 2021, which is not that far off, we hope to have the Markdale Hospital. Our current CIO is part of the refurbishing of the old hospital in Shelburne. So we know that there is a Need there, and where there are many ways to address the concerns. I don't say that the concerns don't exist. I'm just saying we have to look at 360-degree solution. And our council and the CHC are looking at the big picture. Well, this could be an interesting facility for that, and, you know, we've been through a proposal in 2012 that wanted to build a 65-bed assisted living. We're not unfamiliar with the numbers and the needs of assisted living. So, and we understand, you know, about Alzheimer's and things. So I'm just saying is that this is good information. We appreciate that it is good information. We will be utilizing that information. I am sitting on a seniors committee at the community health clinic, which is also, we did a study throughout all of Gray Highlands on a government grant. So we are, we are addressing the seniors issue in Gray Highlands and
Other comments regarding, sorry, Kim's report? Counselor McQueen and then Counselor
Down, because I was told I can't be heard. And I want to be heard. Following up with Deputy Mayor Halliday, we're sort of looking at doing a sales pitch here. As pointed out by the deputy mayor, we did have interested party in 2012 looking at putting assisted living on property with, that was owned by the municipality. And it only made sense if they were going to charge $3,500 per resident, and it didn't fly. So there has been interest in Markdale to do this. Right now, we have a building that has full tenants in the basement. We have a waiting list for a building that is very well, and I think next to none, complimented in the sense of the service that is provided to the care of the people there. So I guess what happens, and I guess we're going to get into that in camera, but I guess if you have a building that you lower the price to a point that's attractive to bring a business into that facility as assisted living or memory care. But if it was, if it was something that, if the building was worth the value, or somebody could go out and build that building and do this in Markdale, why wouldn't they have been doing it already? We're talking about something as an idea that could convert that building, but does that mean we have to give the, at one time, there was a $12 million value on that building. But what happens if we have to give the building away in order to make somebody come there? You know, so where's the value of that? There's a lot of what ifs. I mean, we get appraisals done on, so right now, we have tenants there, but if those tenants all leave because of the uncertainty, we talk about the staffing, well, I mentioned this before in March, that, you know, maybe the staffing issue, part of it is, is the uncertainty of our system. But saying that, we're looking at a building that is a possibility. It's, we don't have an offer. I mean, maybe if we had a company that says, look, if we, you know, if you allow us to buy that for X number of dollars, we'll do this, this, and this. But do we have that? Or is this just an idea? Or a consultant's thought in the sense of where this maybe would go? So I think we have to be very careful, and I guess we'll find out more information when we go in camera of what that, of that dollar value is. But I think in the sense that it's, we have a full complement of the tenants that are in that building now, and if those tenants start to leave, which could be one of ourselves as Gray Highlands, where does that affect the building value? You know, I mean, an empty building, as far as the basement part goes, is something that would affect the value of that building. So I think there's a lot of what ifs in this report, so thank you.
Kim?
Just one point of clarification. The original recommendation that was made on March 23rd was to go out for an RFP on the building. So I think through that RFP process, I think that's what that was meant to do, was to potentially, you know, really ground-truth this, find out what the private sector was willing to do, and to be able to come to a negotiated final solution, if that's what council chose. But that's the reason why that was worded that way, was that by going out for an RFP, there would be an opportunity to find out exactly where the market was. Markdale is a tertiary market. Where's the, with so much demand around the province, where investors are going is where they perceive the least amount of risk. So the farther you get away from those urban centers, your population density is thinner. They're well aware of the staffing challenges that people face in rural Ontario. So, you know, it is less attractive there as an investment vehicle than it would be to be in a more urban center.
So in summary, we may have to give the building away in order to attract somebody to come there.
I can assure you that we would not be giving the building away without, without purchasing or in-camera discussion.
Okay, the other question is, what did it cost to build that building? Was it $24 million?
I would have to ask our treasurer about where the depreciated value of the building was at this time.
No, no, what did it cost to build a building? And what's the cost of building that building today? As you said, it's built in 1999, was it? 99 it was built?
So it's 18 years old.
It's a Class A building. You mentioned in the report that it's now a Class B building.
No, 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 no. No, the Class B is for, as a real estate investment. It's a Class B real estate investment that has nothing to do with its classification as a long-term care facility.
So depreciation, now, in real estate, a house or a building that was a 1999 build is probably double the value today.
Is that
Or double the cost to build it.
Is that how it works in commercial real estate, though?
I don't know. I'm asking the questions. That's why I'm asking, what did it cost to build and what does it cost to build today? I think that's something that's really information that we do need to know, because if, to have a building that is appraised or valued, not to what it's worth in the sense of a real estate, but what it costs to replace that building and what it costs to build that building, is an asset that the taxpayers also of Gray County built and is very valuable in the sense of that space to replace it. So I don't know if I can get those numbers, or what did it cost to build? What is the, I guess we're going to find out what the praise value of it, and what does it cost per square foot to replace that building? The hospital, I think it's 68,000 square, 68,000 square feet was reported by Lance Thurston, and that's going to cost $66 million to build the hospital in Markdale, of a four-bed, four-bed and one extra bed on the side. $66 million. So do we have an asset that's worth hanging on to? Because you never know in the future where the demands and what comes out of the province. So I'm just saying, where is the real value that we have to nail down?
Okay, next is Counselor Fausbreuk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for the information, Kim. I did try to get through most of it last night. So just to clarify a couple of things, because I'm going to have to reread this again. Page 14, it says, "We have relied upon the report entitled 'Preliminary Feasibility Study' dated March 29th." Okay? So, I'm sorry, are you holding up something different than what I have?
Yes. This is the feasibility study.
Okay, so I don't have that.
You don't have that. This is the market information. We have not published this. I do, I would need to go through and sift and sort a version of this for publication as well.
Okay. So we'll look forward to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. This document titled "Appraisal Report" is stamped "Draft" on every page.
Yes.
Why is that?
Because they wanted to give us an opportunity to review it and to ensure that there weren't any corrections, that they hadn't missed sentences grammatical or that sort of thing. So they sent it to us as the first thing. I went through it with Heather, and Heather from CBRE did catch a few things which are addressed in this redacted version. They need to come back to me with a final version of the full report that also reflects those changes and has the draft removed.
Okay, thank you. So that might address why there are pages that are not included and
That's, that's exactly right.
Okay. Because, you know, right off the hop, the terms of reference is sort of the foundation for the document?
Correct.
And I don't see that, and that's not something that we deem confidential, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm going to
No problem sharing with the terms of reference, absolutely.
Okay. So I'll look forward to the full package. I guess the point that I would like to touch on, totally outside of all of this, is when we talk about what the private sector is doing.
Yes.
I know in previous discussions that we have talked about how, as an example, Gray Gables was built not that long ago. And at that time, apparently, it was a well-informed decision. And now, not that long later, we're questioning the efficiency of it and the challenge of the funding from the province, and is everybody really on the same page? I think it's really critical to know what the private sector is intending to do. I see words like profitability, and I know that doesn't necessarily align with caring for seniors. I'm not really going to dwell on that. I guess I just want to bring about where we don't know what the private sector is going to do. I'm really concerned that we're making decisions with really only partial information.
Okay.
So to Counselor McQueen's point, we do have this wonderful asset, and without better intelligence about what the private sector is going to do, whether it's going to be long-term care or any other assisted or graduated living, the one consistent message is the needs are just going to increase. So
So if I can, I want to address your first point, because I think that's really critical, and it's something that's really and it's something that's really, you know, staff have struggled with. When the province changed the requirements with the aging in place strategy, and proclaimed the new version of the Long Term Care Act, when they made those two changes, they fundamentally changed the rules of the game for everyone. And if the municipality of Gray County was consulted in all of that, I'm not aware of it. So the province took a decision to make a change that is having long-reaching effects on all of us. That's where this, when they changed the acuity, that's where these inefficiencies and struggles really find their foundation. And that's not something that was within our control. With regard to what the province, or what the private sector, I'm sorry, might do with the facility, again, going through an RFP process, I think you would be in a position to be having a conversation with your potential purchaser. You would know who you were dealing with. You would know their reputation. You would know their track record for the kind of work that they have been doing in other places. And none of us can foretell the future, but that might be at least some indicator or give some confidence of what their intentions were.
Thank you for that, and I just want to clarify that in the context of the intentions of the private sector, I don't necessarily just mean in this facility. So we have a specific number of allocated beds.
Correct.
And without knowing what the private sector is going to do, how can we make a decision that, oh, we can just give up ours and hope for the best?
We're not giving up any beds.
Well, I understand, I guess.
Or at least, that's the recommendation, is to not give up any beds, I'm sorry. Yes.
I believe we're creating a reliance on the private sector that is still, to date, sufficiently unknown, insufficiently known.
I'm sorry, for, how are we creating, you mean for the assisted living aspect of things?
Without understanding exactly what the intentions are for the private sector in long-term care.
In long-term care, I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding. Okay.
So right now, we have a territory, and we have people, and we have facilities, and we're making, we're expected to make decisions that are going to impact those facilities without knowing what the private sector is going to do. So the increase is clear, we all agree on that, and, you know, to councillor Patterson's point earlier, and, you know, we've touched on this in previous meetings, I think that, you know, there might be some value in making sure that the province knows exactly what we're dealing with, and the challenges and the implications.
I think we brought it forward in our original report, that the challenges that Gray County and rural Ontario face when it comes to allocation of long-term care beds are significant. Gray County, in the big scheme of all of the municipalities, or amongst all of the Linds that has long-term care beds, we're one of the best-bedded jurisdictions. So there's a long way to go before we would be recognized by the province as a place who was suffering a hardship. As far as what the private sector's intentions are with regard to long-term care beds in Gray or anywhere else, we are all beholden to the province for the release and the funding of new beds. And at the present time, there's no indication that there's an intent to do that. Again, if they were to release new beds, I'm not sure that Gray would be at the top of the list to receive those beds, because the need is so much greater in much more highly-populated areas.
I thank you for that. One more, Mr. Warden.
I'm sorry.
Is that all right?
Yep.
So just to finish up with regard to the information that the province has and the Linds, I found it quite interesting that councillor McQueen commented that Minister Hoskins said, you know, "Talk to me." Recently, we had the benefit of a discussion with the director of the Lynn, and I'm not comfortable that that entity doesn't seem to be tapped into the data that should be feeding these decisions. And I say that with all due respect, because if we're paying consultants to tell us what the need is, every time somebody calls a health provider, a service provider, and their needs are met, or not met, or challenged, or they have a concern, if we were effectively gathering that information, then, you know, we might be in a better position to make some informed decisions. In the absence of that, I'm just going to bring it back to, I look forward to receiving the balance of the information, because there's a lot of points, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. Sam.
Councillor Bell. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Kim, first of all, tremendous job on getting this to us on short notice. I congratulate you for bringing that without waiting for timelines. This report you said was going to be here for this meeting, and you delivered it in less than 24-hour turnaround from when you got it. So thank you for that. To defer information like this would make Gray County put them in a black eye, because you said it was going to be here, and you delivered. Thank you for that. I don't know if I'm the only optimist in the room here, but I only saw a lot of good things in this report, and not a lot of negative. So I look forward to moving this process along. I see tremendous economic development in both Gray Highlands and in West Gray, if something does happen in both communities. We do know that Rockwood has some value, we're not going to give that away, and we do know if Gray, if Gray Gables, we have that wholesome discussion to move that along. I saw 50 brand-new apartments and 60 more being added, and I mean, I'd like to look at the glass half-full instead of half-empty. So moving that process along, I would like to be not only a part of it, but I think that we around the table should be excited about the possibilities.
Councillor Hicks is next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I want to thank him for the report as well. And yes, it's a short turnaround time. I know I was personally trying to pour over this report at 5:00 this morning, but nevertheless, we're here. And the data is actually fascinating. I would love to see similar data, frankly, for the southwest portion of the county, because it'd be interesting to see how that compares to what I see here. And it fits as well with what councillor Fosbrook was saying about the availability of data. It would be nice if this sort of data were readily available perhaps to our Lynn, rather than having to go out and get private reports each and every time. I personally really would love to see similar data for the southwest end. The CBRE report talks about a couple of factors that are sort of unknown, one of them being the cost of employee severance, which I think is, if we are going to be moving in the direction of one facility, a consolidated facility, we would certainly have to consider that cost. But one of the other costs, because the-
And I just say that it's my sincere hope that all of our staff would move with us to a facility rather than-
Well, I think that would be the hope, but we'd be foolish not to consider-
No, you're absolutely-
... be some very real costs.
Absolutely, you're entirely correct.
Potential employee severance. The other piece is that the CBRE report seems to be basing its value, or basing its assumptions on the fact that if we are to transition the use of Gray Gables, that the capital cost and the construction, construction capital cost would already have been completed. And that's a factor we really-
They just, they used that, yeah, they used that as a way to have, I think, a level starting field, if you will. We can talk about that more in camera, but you're absolutely correct that that is an assumption that they made when they provided the valuation.
Good. So that said, the big decision to be made, the staff report, and the recommendation is that we proceed with a request for proposal.
That's in the original report, that's right.
And so that's a decision we're going to have to circle around about, too. And if we are proceeding with a request for proposal, I guess the question would be, are we proceeding with a request for proposal with us having already, us paying the cost of that transitional, the construction cost for transitioning? Or would the request for proposal be with the proponent paying for that transitional cost?
It would be my recommendation that the potential purchaser would take on whatever renovations they felt were in their best interests. Each company, I'm sure, has their own specific requirements, needs, ideas about the kind of fixtures and that sort of thing that they would want to use. CBRE was just using the need for renovation. They were making us aware that that would be part of any potential purchaser's valuation consideration, was that some of renovation did need to happen.
And we haven't seen the numbers, and I know we will see the numbers, but obviously, those numbers will be impacted by the fact that the assumption is that the transitional cost has already been paid, that's considered in their value.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion before us is to receive the report that Kim generated. Any more discussion regarding receipt of this report? Councillor McQueen?
So, I don't know, I've been around the table, had a chance to read this, I haven't had a chance to read it. I was at an evening event last night and got up at 5:00 this morning, in my chores to get here, so I didn't have a chance to read it. Are we going to have a further opportunity to have a discussion as county council on this item, for the simple fact of having the time also to get feedback from the public? They may have comments, or they may wish to be delegations on the next council with regards to this report. I just think it's out there, you know, certainly, it's out there, and it's good to have that information, but we haven't had time to digest it. Are we going to be able to have that time to come back and make comments to that report?
As we've stated before, there's no decision being made today.
I realize that.
The motion that's before us is just to receive this report. I'm sure like any report, when we receive it, we read it many times afterwards.
Well, certainly, is there going to be an opportunity to bring other information forward, or comments from that report after we had a chance to read it?
Kim?
If I may, it was certainly our understanding as staff that by bringing the whole question, deferring the report, as we did at the beginning of this meeting until May 25th, that there would be an opportunity for further discussion and consideration by council. I would welcome questions from any of you in the interim, between now and May the 25th, when you've reviewed this material. If you have questions, send them to me, and I will make sure that during the meeting, they're answered. But if you tell me ahead of time, you can bring them up here again, but at least it'll give me an opportunity to make sure that I'm as prepared as I can be to provide a good answer for you.
Through you to the Director of Long-Term Care, I'm just a little bit fuzzy on the calendar of events. We've got two long-term care homes, is it two, or is it just one, that the license is up for renewal? Lynn? Coming close to?
The license at Rockwood Terrace-
Yes.
-expires in 2025. The other homes had a 30-year license in 2010, in '10, with the implementation of that act, so they're fine right now as far as licensing. But we do have a deadline for Rockwood Terrace to make a decision and proceed one way or the other.
But backing that up, as we had stated at one of the previous meetings, was that that's when the license is done, gone. Is there not a review 2021 or 2020, that if we don't have something in place of what we're doing-
Yes.
-they could jump the gun and pull the beds right at that point in time?
Yes, there is legislation that states that the ministry has a choice, and they can come forward and make a decision on the beds if municipalities aren't making a decision. And the risk is, we have 100 beds in Gray County that need redeveloped, and we do know there's pressures throughout the province for long-term care beds. Gray County does not have the biggest pressure in the province by any means, so the ministry can give us notice.
Exactly. Okay, thanks for that clarification. So I guess my point, if I could continue, Mr. Warden, I've heard a lot of discussion around the horseshoe here in the last hour, two hours, starting to lose track of how much time we've been on this, I guess maybe two years we've been discussing it so far. If we keep going at this rate and don't gather the information we have, we cannot wait any longer in my mind to save at a minimum 166 beds. So two homes that we have here right now, it's 166. A lot of the information we've seen is 66 beds in a home is not efficient, effective, and the ministry looking at it, you really don't have the capacity to supply the legislative requirements. So we've got to figure that one out, of what we're doing with 166 beds. If we don't make a decision in the near future, May 25th, we're probably sending a message to the province, the Ministry of Health, Dr. Hoskins, or the southwest Lynn, that we're just treading water here, and we're going to go over the falls.
Put a motion on the floor right now, Mr. Nichols.
I'm not going to put a motion on the floor right now, because it would be, I'd have to say I couldn't support it at this point in time, sir. With all due respect with the motion that's already on the floor, but if you want to go against council's-
We have a motion on the floor to accept Kim's report. Let's stick to what that motion is, and then we'll-
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think we've got a lot of information that we have to go through to May 25th. In my mind, what is the best decision we can make envisioning into the future of how we can keep these 166 beds in Gray County? I believe one of the comments was, "For the fairness to all the municipalities in Gray County." That was a statement that was made earlier on another motion. I think it comes more clear in this one. Not to one municipality over another, but on May 25th, take the information we have and where we're going. Because we remind you, in 1997, somebody has stated here that there was going to be an election in 2018, while there was an election in '97. And I think as much as everybody squealed and wiggled and wormed, there was Ms. Volk's 33, 34 councillors sitting around this table at that point in time, and all of a sudden, with a foul swoop, here we are at 18. To say that a change in government is going to cure all things, Queens Park and the numbers are stating right now, Gray County at 95 beds per thousand, you're 33% over, sorry, Bob, 97 beds per thousand, you're 33% over what some of the other portions in the province are. I can see Stuart wiggling his head saying, "No," but that's the information that we That it means that we've got to make a decision soon and get going with it, or all 166 beds are going to be lost, in my opinion.
Remind county council, the motion that is on the floor is to accept Kim's report. Councillor Fosbrook, do you have anything new then to add regarding this report? Because we're starting to get off into, I think, territory that we're not wishing to get into today. We're receiving the information today. Council needs to absorb all this information. There's more information to come forward in the enclosed session. So I'm just saying, if you have a question regarding Kim's report, then that's fine. Let's proceed.
Short and sweet.
Okay.
The information that's pending, when will we receive that, Kim?
I will work with Heather to get a redacted version of the feasibility report in your hands by the beginning of next week.
Okay, and will that also be posted for public viewing as well?
Redacted versions will absolutely be posted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Anything else then regarding the motion to receive Kim's report? Okay, we're going to call the vote. All in favor? Opposed, if any? It's received. Okay, there's still quite a number of reports to go through for county council that are non-long-term care-related, prior to going then into the closed session where we will have that. I think in all due respect to council, I think now is a good time to break for lunch, and then we can come back with a fresh start then for the planning report then. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation this morning. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation this morning.